Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, September 9, 2025 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're glad to have you all in attendance. We have a standing room only today. I would like to remind you that we do have some room up in our gallery. If y'all would like to make your way up there, you're more than welcome to. But we have lots of items and we will go through these as soon as we can to get you on your way. At this time, I'd like to welcome forward for our invocation, our Denton County Veteran's Service Officer, Paul Bastic, and then our pledge to be led by our District Clerk, David Trant. I do want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones. If you'll, please stand.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners and everybody in attendance today. Please be reminded on Thursday, we have the anniversary of 9/11. Please pray with me. Please uncover if you have your cover on. Dear Heavenly Father, we remember when the towers fell and the lives were lost. We remember the dust and the smoke, the despair and the grief. We remember that sense of vulnerability and shock. We remember the numbness that overwhelmed us as we watched our screens for hours, waiting for an explanation and an understanding. We remember. On this day of solemn remembrance, may we honor the lives that were lost in this tragic event. May we give thanks to those who served and saved, rendered aid and assistance. May we give comfort to those who live with loss. May we seek justice and peace where it is within our ability and rely on you in the ability that escapes us. On this day of solemn remembrance, may we build what has been torn down. May we mend what has been broken. May we live your love when hate seems to reign. May we bear witness to the cause of peace. Holy God, Creator of all people and all nations, it is with sorrow and apprehension we remember the tragic events that occurred on 9/11. We lift you in prayer, all those who died in the Twin Towers, at the Pentagon, and on United Airlines Flight 93. Be with us all today and always. We praise our first responders, our military and our veterans for their service to our city, our county, our state, and our country. We praise you for the many blessings and we ask you to be with us always. May we always remember and never forget. You are the King of Salvation and our Savior. Be with us here today in this court. May the proceedings be in your favor. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the great state of Texas, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you, David. At this time, we have several people registered to speak for our public comments, and we do have several that are registered later during our Lake Ray Roberts items, and so I'll call upon y'all at that time. But these are for general public comment forums. So our first one is Stephanie Draper. Good morning, and I would like to remind everybody, I will set a timer for three minutes. Let's give you three minutes. So go right ahead, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Stephanie Draper, and I am a ex-candidate for State Senate District 12. I am here today because I want to talk to you about the technical issues that we're having, and we need to be able to have the right for people to go have countywide voting. Right now, you are assigned to a voting in a single polling location based on your home precinct. That sounds reasonable, right? Until you remember how busy our lives are on Election Day, it may... People are rushing from work, picking up kids, commuting across the town. Too often, we forget that people are busy. So when they're racing trying to get to a polling site, they're not able to get to the polling site because they're running, trying to get on 35 or 820. You know, the traffic is horrible out here. So I'm asking that we have on Election Day countywide voting because it helps ease the pressure. As an ex-person that worked as a judge for Election Day, I've had to turn away so many people because of the simple fact is they're at the wrong precinct, and they just don't vote after that. So I'm asking that we make sure that we can advocate for our folks and have countywide voting throughout Denton County.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right. Next is Sherri Bradford. Sherri, are you with us? Oh, perfect. There she is. All right, good. No rush, just making sure you're here. Sometimes people register in no show, so just want to make sure.
No, if I get a chance to talk to somebody, I never...
All right, good. All right. Well, we want to hear it. All right, go right ahead, Ms. Bradford.
My name is Sherri Bradford, and I've been a registered voter in Denton County since 1999, and I live in Flower Mound at 1409 Sedalia Drive. From 2020 through 2022, I served as an election worker, initially as a clerk and later as an election judge. And you all may recall that the 2022 state elections were extremely contentious, and after those elections, during which I personally experienced a very serious threat to my personal safety, I stopped working elections. And frankly, it's because of that experience that I'm here to appeal to you to support countywide Election Day Vote Centers. I have... I am a registered Democrat, but I have voted for many Republicans and expect to continue to do so throughout my remaining years. I consider voting to be a profound privilege and one that I take very seriously, and I look at the candidates, listen to the candidates, and I judge for myself, irregardless of their party, who I think is the best qualified for that particular position. I'm asking you today to set up Vote Centers in Denton County so that all those who are legally registered can vote at any polling place in the county on Election Day, just as we do for early voting. As I mentioned earlier, I personally observed elections becoming increasingly contentious events. And while most voters are unfailingly polite and they just want to vote, come through, get done with it, go on with their day, get their sticker, and go have lunch or get back to their very busy schedules, some people came loaded for bear. And they were wanting to fight, and they were waiting for an opportunity to be triggered. That was frightening for me. It was frightening for all the others that worked alongside me. I worked both as a clerk and as a judge, and that was something that we did not expect to happen in the voting area. On every Election Day that I served, people inevitably would show up, often near the close of the day, and find that they were at the wrong place because we had already trained them that they could go anywhere for the rest of their voting behavior. So it made perfect sense to them. They didn't go back and look at the website. They didn't listen to anything about it. They thought they knew because it was an ingrained habit for voters at that point. And for many voters, the only time they vote is at major elections, and so they don't know. They don't... You think they would, but they don't know to go look to find out where they're supposed to vote. And it's an unnecessary chaos, both for them and for voter and for the people working the votes. So I'm just asking you to please consider making this change soon, not only for the... Because there's no reason not to, but also because it will help our voters and it will help our election workers to work more safely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for working the polls for us. I appreciate that.
I appreciate that.
All right. Next is Gloria Smith.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me here.
Absolutely. Go right ahead, ma'am.
Give me two seconds, okay? Don't start the timer yet.
It's all right.
Okay, good morning. My name is Gloria Smith, as you heard, native Texan, okay? I live on Claire Street in Atlanta in Denton County. I have worked elections in three different states, Texas being one. But today, I'm here to ask you to do the right thing and adopt Voting Centers so that all registered voters can vote at any polling place in the county on Election Day, just like they do in early voting. You know what? I love God, and I spend each and every day trying to please Him in the things that I do, whether it's treating people right, what I do at work, what I thought, whatever it is. And by no means am I perfect. There is but one. But I do know that one day, I will have to give an account for the things that I've done in my life. And you know what? You will too. You, and you, you, all of you, will have to give an account. And some may say, have said, "This is small in comparison to the many things that you have the power to do," or someone has said, "Just an unnecessary convenience." When is the last time that you thought something convenient in your busy life was unnecessary? I'm just asking you today to do the right thing. Do the right things for your constituents, your neighbors, and maybe even some of your relatives. Do the right thing for those people who rush after work, who come to vote, or the first-time voter who may have been pushed out there with their parents. I'm asking you because you have the power, and as the prayer said, you have the ability. Man, if I had an opportunity to help someone, and it was as easy as this is, I'd jump at the moment. Do you know how good it feels to do something nice for someone? Then you get to see God smile on you in making it what I call a holy moment. I'll send you all the books later. I left them. We should live for this. You have a choice to make. You can sit in your position and maintain deaf ears and all the constituents asking for help, or you can do the right thing and make God smile. And P.S., I'm asking this also as a favor for all of the election workers because it will relieve some of our stress on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Next is Carol Sof. Good morning.
My name is Carol Sof.
Sof, good morning. Sorry for that.
I'm sorry. It's okay. Either way.
I'll do the best I can. Thank you.
It was distressing to read about the shooting of a civilian on Denton Courthouse Square on August 9, Saturday, 12:10 p.m. in the afternoon. It would be helpful if the city and the county declared the square a gun-free zone. It would help small businesses and put people's minds at ease about something like the shooting happening again. While gun ownership was common in the Old West, many towns restricted the carrying of firearms in town. For example, both Tombstone, Arizona, and Dodge City, Kansas, had laws prohibiting weapons. They wanted people to come and live in their town and be safe. The city and county should discuss this since both should be involved with keeping citizens, visitors, and businesses safe on the square. Gun-free zones already are at airports, courthouses, polling places on voting days, schools, and businesses with visible signage prohibiting handguns. Please work together with the city to make a gun-free zone on the square. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right. Next is Dan Burnham.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here. Yes, I'm sure several of you recognize that I've been here before.
I do recognize you. Thanks for being here.
Here again to speak on the Voting Centers. The main argument that I have heard against Voting Centers, again, has been the correlation between the Voting Center enforcing the closing precinct-centric voting sites. I've asked several times, why are these two linked together? They're very separate issues. They don't need to be linked together. Through further research, going out to votedenton.gov, very good information out here. First off, what are Vote Centers, and why does Denton County not use Vote Centers? There's absolutely nothing in there describing on the county level where there's anything, any correlation confirming that voting sites, precinct-centric sites must be closed down just because we have the Voting Centers. It does refer to that we would have to... Gives a little history here. Since Denton County has had a paper-based system since 2017, we were prohibited from participating as a Vote Center county. The 2021 legislative session rectified that by adding hand-marked paper ballots that are printed in the polling location. So we've been eligible for it, but there's one more requirement. We must meet the Texas Election Code, Section 43.007. If you read that code, nowhere in that code is there anything mandating the shutdown of precinct-level Voting Centers. And I'm opposed to shutting down the precinct-level Voting Centers. However, there may be some confusion because within the Texas Election Code, Section 43.007, it does say that our commissioners would be allowed, not required, allowed to shut down certain precinct voting sites if they meet a certain series of criteria. Okay? There's a big difference between being allowed and being forced mandated that you have to do that. Now, I trust your general decision, and it's been the whole basis of having the Commissioner Court is to allow you to make decisions on this matter. But trust me, if you decided to random, willy-nilly start shutting down precinct locations that don't meet the criteria and don't match the benefit to the county, general populace overall, I'd be back down here. Okay? But there is no requirement to shut down. So this argument that's over and over and over based upon, oh, we'd have to shut down the... That is just simply... It's not material. It does not matter in this case. That is not a legitimate argument, and that is repeatedly the number-one argument against Voting Centers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next is David Pennington. I hope I heard this correctly. Is it David? Oh, that's for A. I'm sorry. We'll do you in just a moment. Next is Mr. Kurt Hyde.
Good morning. Excuse me. Thank you. My name is Kurt Hyde, and I'm from Corinth. I'm terribly sorry about this little cough. In any case, I am here to speak against Voting Centers, and I wish to protect the precinct as the fundamental building block of election integrity. And I'm hearing about people who are being confused about where to vote. Well, why don't we adopt the New Hampshire system where they pick a place, and that's where they vote? And I was back there last year as part of a voting little thing that was over there in that state, and I found out that when I lived in Manchester, the place I voted in the early 1980s, that's the same place they vote today. No change. I don't know who rolls the dice every time and says, "This is where we're going to send them." But we really should not be sending people to places that are a surprise to them. But I've actually... Because I've actually seen that kind of consistency. And like I say, the important thing is to maintain the precinct as the fundamental building block of election integrity. So I'm very much against the Voting Centers, and we should have a place that's close to your home. That, I believe, is convenient enough when we also, in addition to valuing convenience, that we also value election integrity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Let me turn off that timer. Thank y'all for being here. We're making notes, but because it's not a registered item, we're not responding. So that's why we're listening intently. We appreciate y'all being here. We will do the other public comment forums when we take up those other public hearings. So thank y'all for being here today. All right. Now, we have... At this time, I'd like to move on to Item 3A, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing September 11, 2025 as Patriot Day and any appropriate action. And Paul, we have several people here with us today, and then I'll go ahead and read our proclamation. But go ahead.
Judge and Commissioners, again, like I said, in two days, we have the anniversary, the 24th anniversary of 9/11, a day that basically, hate to say it, would live in infamy. And unfortunately, we lost a lot of civilians. We had a lot of fire and rescue. We had our emergency responders that actually took action. And of course, later, we had our military involved in what is now called the post-9/11 wartime. So today, we have invited the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, along with other emergency responders to be here today for our proclamation, and we appreciate you putting that forward.
Perfect. Thank you. If y'all would... You are welcome to come forward, those of y'all who are here for this item, and then we'll be happy to... And we'll read this proclamation.
Please, if you've served, please come forward.
Thank y'all for... Thank y'all for your service to the country. And Paul, thank you for generating this resolution for us to discuss this morning. You know, it is important that we always remember Patriot Day and the sacrifices that were made on that day and in the subsequent years here domestically and around the world, that were connected to the events of the tragic events of September 11. So whereas on September 11, 2001, nearly 3,000 innocent lives of men, women, and children who'd been going about their normal routines were taken from us, depriving families and loved ones a lifetime of precious moments. Whereas in the years that followed, our capacity to love and to hope has guided us forward as we work to rebuild our nation sounder and more resilient than ever before while standing strong as one. Whereas the pain inflicted on our nation on September 11 was felt by people of every race, background, and faith, though many young Americans have grown up without knowing firsthand the horrors of that day, their lives have been shaped by it. Whereas first responders risked and gave their lives to rescue others, demonstrating the unwavering heroism that continues to define our great nation, along with military service pride. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court hereby recognizes September 11, 2025 as Patriot Day, and a day of remembrance, and urge all citizens to observe a moment of silence, to honor the innocent victims who... to observe a moment of silence to honor the innocent victims who perished because of the terrorist attacks of September 11th, 2001, done at open court this the ninth day of September 2025, upon a motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Members, do y'all want to make any comments? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Those of us who did not actually serve, I think every one of us can still remember where we were when we first heard about this attack on our country. I can remember getting dressed, and at that time, I had a TV in my bathroom so I could watch TV while I got dressed. And there I was, half-dressed, watching this. My phone kept ringing. People were calling me, telling me to turn the TV on and watch. And I'm sure every one of us in the audience has a similar type experience. What I remember the most is y'all running to the place, not away from it. You were there to serve, and you wanted to go and rescue people. I want to thank you so much. There's no way we can say thank you enough, but I'd like to try. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any other comments?
I just want to thank you for your service in the past and now, and all of those that served. And as Commissioner Edmund says, the people run to the bad situation rather than run from it like I do. I appreciate everything that you do, not only from Dent, for Dent County, for everywhere you work, all you do. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate you.
Good, thank you.
Echo all those comments. We can't say enough positive things about what you all do for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you all for your service.
Thank you for your service. All right, any other comments? Anyone make any comments related to today?
Anyone?
All right, very good. All right, all, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all, thank you.
They're fast, too. I run faster and jump higher. I run faster and jump higher now. When I used to get little, you know, you'd get your brand-new shoes, you'd always run a little bit.
I don't do that anymore. All right, next, let's go to Item 3B, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing September 2025 as National Preparedness Month and any appropriate action. We have our contingency from our emergency management, Samantha Taylor, are you gonna, you'll come forward? Lots of special guests here as well. Go right ahead.
All right. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Morning.
Thanks for having me here today. I just wanted to talk a little bit about preparedness. It is September, National Preparedness Month, with FEMA recognizing that we need, all as collectively, as a community, need to take a step together and work towards preparedness. Each year, they have a theme, and this year's theme is going back to the basics, something that we've been talking in our office for quite some time now. And as you all know, Texas has its fair share of disasters, especially in North Texas as well. In fact, we actually lead the nation in the amount of disaster declarations that hits the President's desk, the most billion-dollar disasters, and then North Texas gets everything besides love at this point. So, we want to remind folks that, you know, we have about 90 people a day coming to the community. We want everyone to know their risks, and when they do, make a plan with their family, make sure it's inclusive of any, with special needs or disabilities, include pets. Sign up for emergency alerts when they can. They can go to dentoncounty.gov and right on the homepage, sign up for emergency alerts. And then we also have a registry for the State of Texas Emergency Assistance Registry. So those that are electric-dependent or have durable medical equipment or have any special considerations, we'll have that registry so we can check on them during the disaster. Also, we want to offer folks to get involved in the community. We do have an amazing volunteer group, several of actually. So, we have the CERT Community Emergency Response Team, ARES. It's the Amateur Radio Emergency Services. I butcher that every time, sorry. And then we have the Medical Reserve Corps. So, great groups of folks, so we want everyone to join and get involved while they can. Another thing, too, it's this, this month, actually, next week, September 14th through the 20th, is National Community Emergency Response Week to recognize our volunteers. We do have the September Preparedness Fair this coming Saturday at the Administrative Courthouse between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. So we would like folks to come, get involved, meet our responders, their emergency vehicles, and then also get tips on how to get prepared, and then also gather items to build towards their go-kit. And then one last thing, we have partnered with Denco 911. This one's special for us. We got to work with the community and schools for, for folks to, if you have this calendar, create a disaster they have and create tips for each month, so to kind of get prepared. And we would like to recognize them today. I do have Ben Jackson here who was leading that project, if you want to say any words.
Thank you. Good morning, Ben.
Good morning, Judge Eads. Commissioners.
Good to see you guys.
Doing fine, sir.
I just wanted to say thank you to the families that are behind me here. Unfortunately, we weren't able to have them all as it is a school day. But again.
That's why we're gonna get them out of this courthouse and get back to the classroom.
That's right, that's right.
There's a reason I'm doing this agenda this way. Go ahead.
Yeah, but I just wanted to say thank you again, also to Denco. It's really what this month is all about, being prepared. Not only local agencies partnering together and assisting each other, but the community coming together for a greater purpose and understanding and preparing for disasters and events that may happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ben, and thank you for all that you do. All right, did you want to introduce any, is that all you wanted to introduce?
We have the family here, if y'all want to come on up, and the team.
All right, why don't we have, I would love to have our emergency management office, any of y'all, the staff members and the team members, if y'all come forward, and then, and we have our students who did great artwork for this calendar, and, I mean, very talented. We're glad to have y'all here, if y'all come forward. And then we'll, we want, we want y'all to be part of this resolution here. I want to, I want to thank our team for all that they do for emergency management, and it's really about having a mindset of preparedness, that it's about having a mindset. I would, I would tell you, two groups that they mentioned, which was our CERT and our MRC, we could not have gone through so many of the events and incidents that the county has endured and led through. And I think it's important, we've led through so many different events, whether it's COVID or tornadoes or flooding, other issues related here, power outages, ice, snow, all the different events that we've incurred just since I've been in office. I would tell you, we couldn't do it without our volunteers and our partners, and, I mean, we couldn't, we could not. And it, sometimes we get, we might get depressed by reading the news and headlines of today, but when you, when you see people come together, it, it revives your faith in humanity and our Denton County residents and the heart that they all have to serve one another. And so I want to, I want to, I want to just give a shout out to all our volunteers and our staff members. You know, we believe in helping our fellow Texans, and I want to thank our emergency management personnel who go across the state of Texas, whether it's floods in South Texas or hurricanes or wildfires out west, that they, they go and help our fellow counties. And so counties helping counties, and so Denton County is a real leader in that, and the court shares that vision, and so it's a real priority. So, I want to read this court proclamation recognizing the month of September 2025 as National Preparedness Month in Denton County. Whereas the safety and well-being of all residents of Denton County are of utmost importance, whereas Denton County, like communities nationwide, is vulnerable to natural and man-made disasters, including severe weather, floods, wildfires, and other emergencies. Whereas advanced preparedness reduces the risk of injury, loss of life, property damage, while strengthening recovery and resistance. Whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, designates September as National Preparedness Month, a national campaign aimed at encouraging individuals, families, businesses, and communities to take proactive steps toward emergency readiness. Whereas Denton County supports this initiative by urging residents to create emergency plans, build supply kits, stay informed about local hazards, and participate in preparedness activities year-round. Whereas Denton County, in collaboration with the Denco Area 911 District, recognizes the creativity and commitment of local students whose artwork was selected for the 2025 Preparedness Calendar, highlighting the importance of youth involvement in promoting safety and preparedness. Whereas Denton County will host its annual Preparedness Fair on Saturday, September 13th, 2025, here at the Denton County Administrative Courthouse, providing information, demonstrations, and resources to enhance community resilience. And whereas the week of September 14th through the 20th, 2025, is recognized as National Community Emergency Response Team, CERT Week, honoring the service of CERT volunteers and promoting citizen participation in local programs. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Preparedness Month. And September 14th through the 20th, 2025, as National CERT Week in Denton County, encourage all residents to remain vigilant, prepared, and engaged in safeguarding our communities, done at open court this the ninth day of September 2025, upon a motion made by, motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? I always want to echo everything that's in that resolution. Any other comments?
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Judge, I think it's important for us to note that not every county has a team like this and an emergency preparedness thing for the public. I'm very impressed with that. And I want everybody to also realize, this group is called upon by other counties in Texas because they know what they're doing, and they can be leaders and help other counties. We're so proud of y'all. Thank you for what you do, and hopefully, we won't keep you quite so busy in the next year.
That's right, absolutely. Any other comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
I love it when we have the kiddos.
Oh, yeah.
Hand me some of that. Do you mind?
Nope.
This would be very best.
Oh, no. We have cases of it still.
I know. That was the only thing they could make for a while.
It's a long story. Very nice. All right, Gary, you get to follow the kids, you know, which is always a tough act. So let's go to Item 3C, approval of a proclamation recognizing September 2025 as United is the Way Month. I like that. And any appropriate action? Go right ahead, Mr. Gary Henderson.
Judge, Commissioner's timing is everything, isn't it? I think we're gonna watch a video in just a second. Two of our young leaders have a message for you. But first, our Board Chair, Carrollton Fire Rescue Chief Mike Thompson, would like to say a few words.
Perfect, good, thank you. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning. Thank y'all for having us here today. On behalf of United Way of Denton County and the over 54,000 residents that were served last year, I'd like to thank Judge Eads, Commissioners, for y'all's support. You know, the United is the way forward to ensure that all of our residents have an opportunity to thrive. Denton County's had a great, has been a great partner for us for many, many years. We look forward to growing that partnership over the years to come. Thanks to the generosity of our donors, we're able to support our 18 nonprofit agencies who are strategically located throughout the county in many different focus areas so that they can come together and really ensure a better and brighter future for Denton County. So again, thank y'all so much for this proclamation.
Perfect, good, thank you.
Let's go ahead and go to our video.
No sound.
Let's rewind it. Is our volume up?
I think it's there, it's just really low.
Hold on, we'll pause for just a second, we'll get to... Yes, he can, he can start it over.
I think we can. Now we're stuck.
I know it's possible we've done it before.
You can hear him, there's really low. There you go.
No, it's not to the system. This is...
Turn that volume up a little more.
Hold on, we'll just take, we'll just take a two-minute recess while we get this worked out. We'll just take a two-minute recess. Everybody stretch your legs for a second. All right, I was going to try to differ away. Be right back. That's right, that's right, that's right.
She was one head out.
Yeah.
Four.
Yeah, I've been trying to...
I'm sure she's got it under her chest.
Yeah.
Something transitive.
It's already, it's already sweating down.
On for what it is happening.
So it's why you trial it before. All right, that's called being a head. It's not going to work. Thank you. We'll just do it without it. Yes, yes, yes. Okay, Gary, we have a technical bug this morning, so we're going to proceed.
If we could just punctuate by saying those 18 nonprofits served 54,000 people across Denton County last year. And we appreciate every donor who gave a dollar to help those services become possible. Thank you.
Well, I want to, I want to thank the United Way of Denton County for their exemplary service and their leadership and their partnership with Denton County on so many issues. And I think it's, if we talk about the United Way, it's important to know that we look, we do community needs assessments. We look and see what the community needs here in Denton County. And not just a hunch or a suspicion, but we actually really do a thoughtful analysis in working with our partners, working with our local schools and the counties and the cities, and figure out where do we need to, what are some next steps that we can work in a coordinated effort? And, and that is, I'm proud to be a United Way board member and all the, and see firsthand the accountability and the performance measures that y'all look towards with our partner agencies. And so that anyone across all four corners of this county can make a donation. And we encourage people to make a donation to the local United Way, and they know that that money is going to be invested, invested in making Denton County a, a better place to live, work, and play. And so I just can't imagine not having y'all a vibrant United Way here in Denton County because y'all do exemplary service. And so I just want to thank y'all for all that you do. And so, absolutely. And so I want to read this proclamation. And we will put the, so stay tuned for the video because we will put it out in our newsletters this week. So, so that'll be, that'll be exciting, so stay tuned. So this is a court proclamation recognizing September 2025 as United is the Way Month. And whereas United Way of Denton County improves lives by mobilizing communities like Denton County, Texas, to action so all can thrive. And whereas United Way, United is the Way, we create a healthy Denton County community with strength and resilience, wellness, and financial security, where everyone, regardless of age, has the opportunity to flourish. Whereas by working together to co-create solutions to people's most pressing challenges, United Way of Denton County positively impacts the lives of over 54,000 local residents annually. Whereas, you know what, United Way of Denton County leads the effort with a network of nonprofits, governments, businesses, and donors to respond to the neighbors' immediate needs and seek a better solution for large community-wide issues. Now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim September 2025 as United is the Way Month and proudly join United Way of Denton County in calling upon all residents of Denton County to give to one, to give to one, to impact many as we take action to create a future where everyone has the chance to thrive. Done at open court this the ninth day of September 2025, upon a motion by the Chair.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all for being here.
One, two, and three.
Brooke, if you'll come forward. Although I do not want to do this item, no. No, it's good. We can't see. All right, this is item 3D, approval of a proclamation recognizing Brooke Hambrik's dedicated service to Denton County. And members, you are well aware that Brooke has taken an opportunity outside the county government. And I, I wish her all the best as a, as a dear friend for so many years and as a, as a colleague. We wish her all the best personally. Sad, but we're, we're very happy for you, Brooke. And so although you're not retiring, you have plenty of good Bible years ahead of you. We wanted to take a moment, take a moment to express our deep appreciation for you and everything you've done here at the county. So this is a court proclamation recognizing Brooke Hambrik, Intergovernmental Relations Administrator. Whereas the Denton County Commissioners Court is pleased to recognize Brooke Hambrik for her four years of dedicated service to Denton County as Intergovernmental Relations Administrator from 2021 to 2025. Whereas Brooke brought over 20 years of experience in government and politics at the local, state, and federal levels, including service in legislative offices for federal and state senators, as well as in nonprofit and political fundraising in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. Whereas before joining Denton County, Brooke served as Development Manager for the North Texas Commission, raising vital funds to maintain and expand the commission's regional advocacy at the state and federal levels. Whereas during her service with Denton County, Brooke worked closely with Judge Andy Eads and the Commissioners Court to advance key legislative priorities, including the creation of a funding mechanism to enhance tourism and economic development substantially. She also played a vital role, a pivotal role in efforts to bring accountability and transparency to the Denton Central Appraisal District and collaborated with local organizations to address mental health issues in our community. Whereas Brooke was instrumental in establishing the Denton County's Mayor's Council, organizing meetings that strengthened collaboration among municipal leaders, enhanced communication, and aligned priorities across local governments. Whereas she led the planning committees for Denton County Days in 2023 and 2025, achieving the highest attendance in the program's history and creating strong connections between Denton County and state leaders. Whereas Brooke's commitment to public service began early in her career through her work with State Senator Jane Nelson and throughout her tenure. She has demonstrated an enduring passion for policy, a commitment to excellence, and a tireless dedication to strengthening the future of Denton County. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court expresses our most profound appreciation to Brooke Hambrik for extraordinary contributions to Denton County and extends best wishes for success in all her future endeavors. Done at open court this the ninth day of September 2025, upon a motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Brooke, I want to, well, I'll let the others go, then I'll wrap up. And I'll let, I promise I'll let you have the last word. All right, did anyone want to say anything?
Ladies first.
Go ahead, do you want to say anything?
Brooke, it has been such a joy to work with you again here at the county. As you know, I work with you often at Senator Nelson's office, but you have just been a blessing, just not to just the court, but to the residents of Denton County. Thank you so much for your smarts, for your integrity, and for all that you've done for us. And best of luck in your new position.
Thank you.
Did you want to add anything?
Brooke. We can.
I want to thank you for the job that you've done. You always serve with such professionalism. You know, I remember a long time ago, working for Jane Nelson, how you represented that office. You come to Denton County and did the same thing. We appreciate the work that you've done. We appreciate the, you know, the back, back of the office work that you've done that have helped us who are out front. And you don't mind going behind the scenes, grabbing information that we need to present to the citizens. And I want to appreciate you for all that you've done. I, I remember meetings, Precinct Three Task Force meeting. You come in and taking notes and giving that information to Jane. And you are always professional as you are here. So we just thank you. I hate to lose you, but remember, we can still lay our hands on you, so you get ready.
I'm not going far, I'll still be here.
Okay. We appreciate all that you do and enjoy your new job. You know, it's good sometimes that we take a break from the job that we're doing and learn something new. And you've certainly learned a lot here and brought us a lot from the state government here to help us here in the county government. So I appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Brooke, we, we're going to miss you so much, but so proud of you. And, and you are the consummate professional. Thank you so much for all that. But you know what we're going to miss the most is that bright smile that you bring every day.
That's right.
And that is, it is so inspirational, and you are inspirational. Thank you so much, but we are proud of you and can't wait to see how you're going to continue to thrive.
Thank you.
All right, very good.
Yes, Ms. Hambrik, this is a bittersweet situation for obviously all of us up here that are able to enjoy your, the years of experience that you bring to the table. I know my office in particular has utilized your services and your help in many aspects, which has made us do a better job for our constituents. I know Capricia has enjoyed the relationship as well, just based on being able to have those conversations that, that you're able to help again with information or doing the digging, the deep dives, that, that we may not actually know where to go to find the information. And, and you've done a heck of a job from that perspective. And, and so it's, there's no wonder you're, you're moving on to a better opportunity for yourself financially. And so, you know, we always hate losing wonderful employees, and we do everything we can to keep them. But at the end of the day, we look at ourselves and say, we, we did a really good job. Anytime we have someone that progresses on to even better and brighter things in their future. So we get to look at ourselves and say, hey, you know, the county has, has done a good job, great, you know,
You really have.
Putting people like yourself out to other opportunities. So you'll be greatly missed, but I know we'll see you around. But thank you again for everything you've done for my office and the citizens I'm responsible for in Precinct One. I really appreciate it.
I appreciate you.
Well, I want to echo the comments of the colleagues, and they, they said it very well. And I think there's several words that come to mind when I think about you, Brooke. And the first one I think would come to mind is just professionalism. You know, when you think about a professional person is, I think, I think of Brooke Hambrik. And when we created this position four years ago, one mind, one name came to mind, and that was, I thought, who would be the great person for this job? Who's this job made for? And that was you. And it was made for you. And you, you were a great first person to set that office up, you know, and because of your, your skill set and your abilities and your long-term relationships and your credibility. And so you always looked for win-win solutions. Everything that we were doing with the legislature, with Gary, the United Way, or all the different agencies that we've dealt with, you always looked for a win-win solution for all parties. I appreciate you being a trusted advisor, you know, on things that may not even be related to the government, you know, or a policy, but just things that we're doing here at the county. And so you're always very much a trusted advisor. You believe in building relationships on all levels, whether it's with our major employers, our, our city officials, the state. You always, our nonprofits across the region. So building relationships is key, key for you. And I think to wrap it all up, it would be your heart for service. You know, it's not just head knowledge, but it's heart knowledge. And so you have a real heart for service. And so for all those reasons, we are going to, to miss you greatly. But you have an abundance of blessings and best wishes from each and every one of us. And, and we appreciate you more than you'll ever know. So, so thank you. And so I'll let you have the last word.
Well, thank you so much, Judge and Commissioners, for this generous recognition. I'm truly humbled and deeply grateful for the opportunity to have served alongside each of you. I've gotten to see firsthand your commitment and care for the residents of Denton County, and it's been both inspiring and meaningful. I've also been very fortunate to work with a talented team here at the county, with our employees and our departments, and so many organizations in the community and community leaders who really work hard every day to make a difference in the county. Being a part of this team has been an incredible experience, and I am so, so grateful to each of you. I have enjoyed every moment and will certainly cherish the memories that we've made. And there's a lot of great times, and we certainly have accomplished a lot, and it's been great to be part of your team.
Thank you, thank you, Brooke. One of the biggest accomplishments was our, establishing our revenue stream for our future Expo Center, which is a project that, that is going to be a legacy project for this county for future generations. And when Brooke and I were walking the marble floors of the Capitol building, people would say, well, which lobbyist team are y'all hiring? Did y'all hire to get, this is a, this is a big deal. They're trying to get this accomplished. Usually we play defense at the county. We don't play offense and try to get somebody across the finish line. We just try to kill bad bills. And this is something we were trying to promote, some goodness. And I said, we're doing this homemade. This is, we're doing this ourselves. homemade. This is, we're doing this ourself and we're not, we're not hiring the big lobby teams and everything. And we got across the finish line.
We did. It was certainly your vision.
Through our good efforts and that of the court, our delegation, there's many people, but it takes a driving force. And anyways, I just wanted to thank you for, for all your skills and abilities. And anyway, it's, it's, that is particularly one project that would definitely outlive all of us, our, our terms here. So as well, thank you for making that a reality.
It was certainly your vision and I just helped execute it. So thank you.
See, what a professional she is. All right, any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Brooke.
And Judge, I did bring with me today is my husband Wade and my son Jake. My younger son has been working hard for geometry, so he's taking a test right now. But certainly want to thank them as well.
No, no, no. Oh, okay.
hearing for Tuesday, September the 9th, 2025, to consider, approve, deny or take appropriate action for a zoning change from Ag Agriculture to R3 Residential Single Family Low Density District, LRR 06250016, property R59656 is located in Lake Ray Roberts Planning and Zoning District and Commissioner Precinct One. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Move it open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Do we have anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to item four A? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to? Stephen, would you like to come give an overview from a staff report? Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. So we've got a zoning change request before you today. This, this parcel lands is going to look a little familiar because you've heard a case previously on this parcel. So the request today is, is to change or requested zoning change from Ag to R3, which is residential single-family low estate district. So it's three acres or greater. It's about 122 acres near Melton and Hewling. Again, the current zoning is, is Ag. The intended land use per the current ordinance is R4, R5, which is four and five acre estate lots. And so this court did hear a case prior where the applicant had requested an R2 zoning. R2 is two acres or greater. That zoning change was recommended for denial by P&amp;Z and we brought it to Commissioners' Court and court affirmed that denial and denied the requested zoning change. So the applicant has come back and requested the, the R3. P&amp;Z conducted a public hearing on July 21st. They did hear from representatives from the applicant who spoke in favor of the request and there was one resident who spoke in opposition. We have received eight written responses in opposition to the request as well. At the time, P&amp;Z made the recommendation to deny the request and that recommendation was unanimous. And so the recommendation to Commissioners' Court today is to, to deny the requested zoning change. So again, this is, this is the site plan, the overview of the, of the property. Again, it's 122 acres off of Melton. So this is the current zoning. If you remember when the, when the new ordinance was adopted, anything that wasn't zoned was zoned Ag. That was kind of a placeholder zoning. And so anytime development occurs, you have to come and if, if it's out of compliance, you have to come and get it rezoned to whatever's appropriate for the land use. And so we've got a smattering of, of parcels in this area that have been rezoned. You'll see some, some parcels to the north that are, that were rezoned R4, R5. There's a couple of parcels, there's four parcels to the south. Two of those are old R2, the, the kind of brown gold color. Those are old R2. Those were zoned prior to the current ordinance. And so old R2 is one acre or greater. That L-shaped parcel to the east is old R1, so that's five acres or greater. The one outlier is the parcel to the west. That original tract was, was, was a five acre parcel. It was rezoned to R1 inside the new ordinance. So after the ordinance was adopted, that case was a little unique because four of those acres are encumbered by P&amp;Z's flow adjustment or the court's flow adjustment. And so there was really only an acre that was developed for that. So that was kind of the thought process behind approving that R1 zoning change request. And then this is the intended land use. This is the map we use to kind of guide decisions on, on zoning. And so you'll see on the west side, the yellow, that's R1, R2, R3, that's one, two, three acre lots or greater. And on the, on the west side, or on, sorry, on the east side is R4, R5, which is four or five acre or greater. And so that, and that's where this parcel currently resides. So that's all I've got. Again, the recommendation from P&amp;Z is to deny the requested zoning change.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. I want to go in order of those who have registered for the, we have several people who registered for this. And so next, first is Sharon Overall.
First.
Wish to speak related to that.
Registered before I did.
Then I have a Phyllis Barron following that, Elaine Martin,
I know Phyllis.
and a Linda Carlson, and David Pennington.
Phil, I know Phyllis registered first. Mine won't make sense without hers.
Okay. Go right ahead. Y'all will state for the record who, who y'all are.
My name is Phyllis Kirby Barron. And we are currently the owners of the 122 acres of, of the property. My family has owned this property for 63 years. And what we want to talk to you about is the hearing that was taken place in 2009 by the County Commissioners' Court. And so we have the videos of what was actually in court then that we would like to play for you.
I don't think we can hear that. But if you could, if you wanted to do a summary of that, we'd love to hear that.
The blue that's up in the center of the lake would be five acres and larger. The brown areas around the lake would be three, four or five acres and larger.
I said I can't hear it. It's not going to work. Okay, the first video was when Ms. Alcorn was speaking and when my mother was speaking to her in 2009, she was corrected by the county court that it was zoned for R3, 4 and 5. The second video that we had is when they keep correcting my mother that actually came to this court back in 2009 and it was corrected by the court over and over again that it was zoned R3, 4 and 5.
Okay.
As Mr. Burrows stated in, in Mr. Montgomery, it's a die.
Can't hear it. Is this not on?
Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. Then also, there is a video of Judge Ead saying that the map should only be as a guiding principle and that smaller tracts of land would be reconsidered for rezoning based on if there were not views to the lake. So I do have a poster here that shows.
Shows from the property, none of this is seen by the way.
All of it is, is not made across property.
Okay.
And so what I'm requesting with what I'm saying is that since originally it was zoned 3, 4 and 5, to go back to its original or what it was stated on the map as zone R3, 4 and 5.
So just real quick to respond to that.
Yes.
That is not accurate. That may have been what they said, but they were, they made it, they misspoke. And that's not what the map, if you pull back the history.
Is your mic on?
Yes, my mic on. If you pull back the history and you look at the actual map, it was zoned the way it was supposed to be. The, they may have, the people misspoke during court, which can occur. But that's, that's not the facts of what was actually approved. What was approved was the actual map that was shown earlier. And Mr. Belknap, if you want to come back up, you can discuss that as, as well. But we, we listened and heard those concerns, looked into it, went to the county clerk, had that information pulled up as well, because I did want to make sure that there was not something that it was different than what we currently have today. And it aligns with what we actually have today versus what the person said in court.
But Mrs. Alcorn corrects my mother. Mrs. Alcorn would have been, I guess, Mr. Belknap's equal.
Yes.
And if she had misspoke the first time, when she was first giving it, why would she correct my mother and say R3, 4, 5 again? I mean, to me, it looks like there is, I'll go into this a little bit in a minute. Also, I wanted to show y'all that on south of Hewling, which they conveniently keep it up here, it's all R1, 2, all the way over to the lake, as you can see. All right. Okay. You're going to do the, this. And all of this is 2, all of this leads to the lake is 1. We have 1, 2 and 3 around us. We have 2 above us. All that's 2. All right. So, let me say this. All right. I am Sharon Kirby Overall. We are requesting that the zoning be changed to R3. This is the proposed land use for this area. I was at the meeting on February 24th, 2009, where Mrs. Kathy Alcorn, who was zoning staffer representing, presented the ordinance and map. As you heard in the videos, which you didn't get to hear because you were saying you couldn't hear them, she states that yellow is R1, 2 and brown is 3, 4, 5. She corrects my mother and states again that it was that. AutoCAD drawings are made up of layers. And if you turn on the wrong layer, you might have the wrong legend because they only have one set of drawings and then they will do that. So we were asking this court to honor the R3 that was told to us and to this court in 2009. I doubt that someone who had been working on this for three years would make them a snake, not just once, but make it twice and correct my mother on her land. The zoning commission and some others have stated that they want to stick to the proposed use map. Ms. Kathy Alcorn specifically stated that the map is a guide that doesn't lock the commissioner of the Commissioners' Court and only granting the zoning that is shown. Ms. Alcorn states in 2009 that every classification were requested in any area. We lost at the zoning commission meeting before we even showed up. Even though three approved us for the R2 at the May meeting, after the May meeting, the chairman was removed and the zoning board was given new instructions to only approve the intended land use on the map they are currently using per the new chairman. Over and over again, in the 2009 meeting, the County Commissioners' Court was told that this is only a preference. Judge Eads and Commissioner Mitchell, you will recall that this was exactly what my mother and Commissioner Coleman were afraid of in 2009. There was even a discussion on the name of the map so that everyone would be aware that it was only a guide and not set in stone. They now refer to it as the intended use, not preference or guide. Judge Eads in 2009, you stated that the map should be a guiding principle with room for adjustment on particular pieces of property. And if you do not have like visibility, that you would be open to smaller lots. We would like for this court to honor the three acre designation that was presented to the Commissioners' Court in 2009. Our land is on the outskirts of the brown area and we do not have views of the lake. And we have shown you that an R3 designation is consistent with zoning surrounding us. We would like this to be considered without prejudice if for any reason is not approved. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Stephen, did, will you come back up here? So what was the, can you give another summary of the response to the, the comments that they were making related to the actions of the, the actions of the committee? And why did the, why did the committee recommend denial?
Well, essentially it boiled down to the fact that it doesn't conform to the intended land use. I mean, that's the crux of the, of the conversation.
And Stephen, do you mind addressing where the, the young ladies are obviously upset because of what was said prior in 2009, but actually what was that recorded? It didn't pass that, that particular day and what was actually recorded that we have as far as the map goes?
Sure. So, so the map that's recorded at the clerk's office is reflective of the map.
Can you speak into that microphone better?
So, so the map that we, the, so the map that's at the clerk's office that was recorded as a result of court's vote back in 2009 is the map that we use today. So it's R1, 2, 3 is that yellow color and R4, R5 is the brown color.
And, and just to clarify something, just because you can't see the lake has nothing to do with why, it, it falls within a radius. It doesn't have to do whether you can see the lake or not see the lake, just to make sure we're clear here. It's a mile with, outside of the shoreline that, that fall within the P&amp;Z and the land, the intended land use. So I can appreciate where they're coming from, but that's not, that's not the definition that they're following by as if you can see the lake or not. It's, it's based, the boundary's based on actual a mile outside of the lake boundary. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Judge, I have a question.
Yes.
We heard that there was apparently a, a change in the leadership of that P&amp;Z committee.
There was.
And I'd be interested in, in details, who had been chairman, who's chairman now and why there was a change made.
So I believe it's every year that has to be reelected.
And who elects the chair?
The P&amp;Z, P&amp;Z makes, yes. P&amp;Z makes that decision. They make the motion, they make the vote, right? And they, and they decide from their member group, chair and vice chair.
Okay. How many are on the committee?
Five, six, seven, eight. So there's three for the judge, two for Commissioner Williams, Sanger, Pilot Point.
Denton.
Denton.
Eight or nine, something of that nature.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Members, other questions? Stephen, before we proceed to the other registered commenters. Okay, thank you, Stephen.
Thank you. And thank you, ladies.
Next, let's go to Elaine Martin. And next to be Linda Carlson. Okay, go right ahead. I think
Good morning.
Phyllis and
Good morning, ma'am.
Phyllis and Sharon already spoke, right? Okay, we got, we got your sisters. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
I'm Elaine Martin and my mom and I own the 50 acres to the east, which touches core property as well. I ask that you follow the Lake Ray Roberts Planning and Zoning Future Use Plan and keep the property at a minimum of R4. I would love to see it stay agriculture, but I know development I would love to see it stay agriculture, but I know development's inevitable. I also want to make you all aware that we get calls and mails frequently trying to purchase our property. So buyers are out there. I hope you will all consider the environment and aesthetics of the beautiful area in keeping it rural. Our property was my granddad's originally, and I have great memories going with him there. Again, I'm not against growth, but I would like to minimize the impact to the area. Please, please, keep it at a minimum of R4. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate that.
All right. Next is Linda Carlson. Good, good morning.
My name's Linda Carlson. I live in Sanger, have all my life, and I've been out on that farm that we're talking about. Okay? The responses are hypocritical. The people, they have said things that they don't want us to change. For example, the Phillips, whose property is adjoining to ours on the south, was broken to 4 and 2 acres. The Pennington's lot is 3 acres. The Prater's lot was broken to 3.6 and 1.38 acres. The Griffiths, which is my daughter, her land was gifted to her and in response to take care of my mother, which she did not do. My mother wanted the land, rezoned as R1. Elaine does not live on the land, and they do not even live in Sanger. Also, there's a 300-yard buffer, 3 football fields from our property to the lake. The lot near the lake will be larger with one, where one would be about 10 acres because of the flood plain, and the other would be 4. Because I live in Sanger, I've talked to people, and they do not understand why we're having so much trouble with this. Sanger's growing. They need nice developers, people that will build on 1 to 2 acres with nice homes, nice homes to live in, not a bunch of acreage out there, and people will put a double wide on or whatever and make it look trashy. We want our lake, our land, to look like other lakes where they have beautiful homes on small acreage. That's all we're asking. I do not understand why they're so against us developing with somebody that would make it look beautiful instead of trashy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Mr. Pennington.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning, Chief.
Again, name's David Pennington. I do live adjacent to the property under discussion. So just want to come in briefly, talk about the property. We all agree growth is coming to Denton County, and we all want to welcome growth coming to Denton County. But we want that growth to come in in an appropriate manner and meet the needs or meet what the land is already designated for. I agree, and it was mentioned, my tract of land is 3 acres, but it was built and developed before the properties were changed to 4 and 5A, or R4 and R5. So yes, the track I live on, again, is adjacent to this. It is a 3 acre. The one thing that is not known, and it really doesn't matter to a whole lot of people, is it's open fenced for a total of 8 acres, and we're running some cattle and everything on it, and we also cut hay on it. So we are using it for residential and for small agricultural, for baling hay. The only thing I'd like to say, I'm in opposition to changing to R3. If the land is already designated R4 and R5, I would like to see it stay that way. So thank you for your time.
Perfect, thank you. All right. I do not believe, Teresa, we have any other registered speakers as it relates to item 4A.
All right, I would like to deny, move to deny approval.
Okay.
With a motion by Commissioner Williams to deny, which is to also support the committee recommendation for the Lake Ray Roberts, which is a denial recommendation.
That is correct, sir.
So with a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any, any discussion members as it relates to the item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we will go ahead and, and we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I think, I know you are disappointed this morning about, I thank y'all for your families'
Continued.
Continued efforts. Efforts here in the county, and I hope that the project will be able to be developed and that y'all have inherited, I hope y'all be able to develop that in a fruitful way. And I do think y'all still have development opportunities, just with a different configuration, a different zoning. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you, ladies.
All right. Let's go ahead and go to item 4B, which is a public hearing for Tuesday, September the night, 2025, to consider, approve, deny, or take appropriate action for a zoning change from agriculture to R4 residential estate medium density. This is LRRR 06250011. The property is R41118, is located in the Lake Ray Roberts Plan in the zoning district. Commissioner Presequen, a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing, and we do have one registered commenter in addition to Stephen Belknap. And that is Mr. Scott Alligood. We'll have, we'll hear from the good attorney here in just a second. We go right ahead, please, sir.
Okay, so another zoning change case, and we've actually got three before you now that are, that are three separate parcels, three separate owners, but it's a family block of land. So because of that, we kind of had to separate it into three separate cases. But in reality, it's, it's one large one. So I'll just, I'll go through it as if it's one case. So you can see here that the location map, there's three lots. There's one small lot, and then the two larger lots adjacent to it. So they are requesting a zoning change from Ag to R4, 4 acres or greater. This property's about 21 acres in total. The end goal is, is to divide the parcels into a 13-acre parcel and two 4-acre parcels. The request does meet the intended land use. The intended land use for this parcel is R4, R5, which again is 4 or 5-acre lots or greater. P and Z met on the 21st to hear the case. We did hear from a representative from the applicant who spoke in favor of the request. No one spoke in opposition, and we've received three written responses, all of those in favor. P and Z made a recommendation unanimously to recommend to court to approve all three zoning cases. And so that's the recommendation to court for this case and the next two is to recommend the requested zoning change.
All right, Judge, I move to approve 4B.
Second.
Let me see if there's anyone else registered to speak in a public hearing just for a second. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to? Go ahead, Mr. Alligood.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see y'all. I don't want to spend too much time. It was approved by the, the, the commission. What this is, we're trying to do is to clean up some prior mistakes by the landowners. The, this 21 acres was owned by Gay Patterson and her husband. Her husband sits deceased. 10 acres were deeded to their son Wes on the east side, and 1 acre was deeded to their daughter and her husband on the, the west side. The, the idea here is we're going to get it into, we want to get it into current, properly configured zoning classification, and then we're going to go get it replatted into three separate lots. Just this, an interesting note, this is within an area that the city of Denton and Pilot Point both claim is within their respective ETJs. So we have a little bit of a issue there, but we'll deal with that outside of this court. I am available for any questions if anybody has any. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I do, I do just want to make sure that it's clear that this is, this is the intended land use that they are requesting. So we're not going outside of or making some major exception to what the intended land use is. And like Mr. Belknap said, this was unanimously approved in the P and Z meeting.
Perfect.
And I move to close.
All right, we have a motion to close a public hearing, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Approve.
We have a motion for approved by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item 4C. 4C is a public hearing for Tuesday, September the night, 2025, to consider, approve, deny, or take appropriate action for a zoning change from agriculture to R4 residential estate medium density, LRRR 06250014. The property is R771453, is located in the Lake Ray Roberts Plan in the zoning district. Commissioner Presequen, we have a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We aren't a public hearing, or is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to proposed zoning change? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the zoning change? Hearing none, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the zoning change by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 4D, it's a public hearing for Tuesday, September night, 2025, to consider, approve, deny, or take appropriate action for a zoning change from agriculture to R4 residential estate medium density, LRRR 0506250015. The property is R698893, is located in the Lake Ray Roberts Plan in the zoning district. Commissioner Presequen, we have a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We do have a, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak, speak in favor of or opposed to the zoning change? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to? Hearing none, we have a motion to close a public hearing.
Move to close.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the zoning change from Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, sir.
There will be no action on 4E. We've had enough zoning changes for one day. All right, let's go to, I want to skip around and get some of our audience out here. Let's go to item 5B, which is a discussion consideration of all matters incident related to the issuance and sale of Denton County Tax Note Series 2025, including the adoption of a order authorizing issuance of tax notes, establishing parameters for the sale and issuance of tax notes, and delegating certain matters to unauthorized officials of the county in resolving all matters incident thereof. The chair will move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go to item 5C, discussion consideration of all matters incident related to the issuance and sale of Denton County permanent, Texas Permanent Improvement Refunding Bond Series 2025, including the adoption of an order authorizing the issuance of bonds, establishing parameters for the sale and issuance of such bonds, delegating certain matters to unauthorized officials of the county in resolving other matters incident there, related there to. The motion, the chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all for being here. Let me. Let's go to... Let's go ahead and go to, we won't take action until a little bit later, but let's, we'll go ahead and do these public hearings that are posted at 10. Let's go to item 7B, which is a public hearing on the proposed. Let's go to, let's scratch that. Let's go to item 7C, which is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2025, 2026, public Denton County budget. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Move to open.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So we are in a public hearing of Alejandro, if you'll give our budget presentation.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
I'm going to be providing a high-level overview of the proposed tax rate and proposed budget as part of our required public hearings for the FY 2026 budget. And as always, I do think it's still important to provide a reminder to the public that the Denton Central Appraisal District is a completely separate entity from the Denton County Commissioners' Court. The Denton Central Appraisal District is responsible for determining values on taxable property, whereas the Denton County Commissioners' Court is responsible for determining a tax rate for the county, just like cities and school districts are responsible for setting a tax rate for their own respective jurisdictions. And part of the reason why appraisal districts really all over the state were, are their own separate political subdivisions is because it provides a sort of checks and balances where you don't have one entity that is both determining the values of a property as well as setting a tax rate. But before the Commissioners' Court can vote to adopt a tax rate, there are certain requirements that must be followed per the tax code, and all of those requirements have been met. We have a published notice in the Denton Record Chronicle for the public hearing on August 24th, and notice was also posted on our website, and it ran in local free access cable from August 24th until today. The FY 2026 proposed budget is $452.2 million, which is a $35.7 million increase or an 8.58% increase above the current FY 2025 adopted budget. And here you'll see that proposed budget broken down into three separate categories, those being the general fund in blue there, the debt service fund in orange, and then the gray portions representing basically all of, all other funds, like the road and bridge fund, permanent improvement fund. Those are all encompassed in that one category. The portion in blue and in gray represents 80% of the proposed budget that is funded through the, which you consider the maintenance and operation rates, whereas the portion in orange is funded through the debt rate. And here you'll see a breakdown of the proposed budget by functional area. So you'll notice on the top left that public safety does make up the largest portion of the proposed budget at 27.66%, with debt services, I just mentioned, making up 20% there at the bottom right. And those two portions make up approximately almost half of the entire proposed budget, with the other functional areas making up a smaller portion of the budget. And here's the breakdown that I just talked about, too. For the tax rate, you'll see the maintenance and operation rate represented in blue with the debt rate represented, represented in orange, which is a slight decrease from the prior year. And they do combine it to the total proposed tax rate for next year in the amount of 0.185938. And then here you'll see that rate I just mentioned at the top compared against three other rates, the current rate for FY 2025, the non-revenue rate, and the voter approval rate. So the proposed tax rate for FY 2026, which we also refer to sometimes as the tax year 2025 tax rate, is 3.891649% above the non-revenue rate. And it is also approximately 1% below the voter approval tax rate and approximately 1% below the current adopted rate for FY 2025. And then here you'll see a, that same tax rate for tax year 2025 in orange there. Once again, that is a tax rate of 0.185938, and you'll see it compared against the tax rate for the past 10 years. So going back to tax year 2016, the court has reduced the tax rate by a little over 6 cents. And as I mentioned during the last presentation, each cent equates to approximately $18 million based on our current taxable value. So that's just to give you an idea of how much the court's reduced the tax rate by a little over 6 cents just over the past 10 years. And we have filed the proposed budget with the county clerk's office and the county auditor's office as required for the local government code. And if approved today, we'll also file the adopted budget with those offices and make it available on our website for view to the public along with other budget-related information. But that does conclude my presentation, Judge.
Perfect, thank you. Alejandro, is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak, speak in favor of or opposed to the proposed fiscal year 2025, 26 budget? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to? Hearing none, do we have a motion to close a public hearing? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're closing that. Before we do the other budget items, I do want to go ahead and, let's go to 14K. We have some guests here with us as well. Let's go to 14K, approval of a, of a pre-development agreement, a financing agreement, and an agreement for the construction of... and funding of authorized improvements and reimbursement of advances related to the enclave of Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, the chair will second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, thank you gentlemen for being here today. All right, took care of that. All right, let's go ahead and we will do a public, let's go ahead and open, let's go to item seven B, which is a public hearing on the proposed Denton County tax rate of zero point one eight five nine three eight per one hundred dollars valuation for the tax year twenty twenty five, which would increase the total tax revenues for properties on the tax, on the preceding year by three point eight nine one six four nine. This is a public hearing, do we have a motion to open a public hearing? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. This is a public hearing, is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the proposed uh property tax rate? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor or opposed to? Hearing none, do we have a motion to close a public hearing? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. That public hearing is done. Uh we will come back to the approval of the tax rate, I mean the overall budget till the end. We, we will do both of those later. Okay? Let's go back, let's, members, let's go back to the beginning of the agenda, let's go to item two. Members, are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda, or have a motion to approve it as presented?
Turn move.
With a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. The consent agenda today consists of item two A, approval of order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item two B is approval of the payroll. Item two C is approval of budgetman request two zero two five three aid for the district clerk to transfer seven thousand dollars from training and education to technology software services, for jury text option, for e-notification for jurors to receive uh essential attendance notifications. Item two D is approval of budgetman request two zero two five three nine for the three hundred ninety-third district court to transfer nine hundred and sixty-five dollars from training and education with four hundred and thirty-seven dollars to dues and subscriptions, with five hundred and twenty-eight dollars to administrative equipment. Funding is needed for refrigerator, for court staff, and increase in additional resource prices. Item two E is approval of budgetman request two zero two five four one for the district court, district court administration transfer four thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars from counseling NSA family studies with four hundred to administrative supplies, two thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars to legal services, and one thousand ninety-one dollars for postage. Funding is needed for an increase in postage rates and additional court setting with a second weekly grand jury and an additional district court to the Lexis Nexis contract. And item two F is a approval of budgetman request two zero two five four three for the four hundred and eighty-first district court to transfer nine hundred and seventy-five dollars from ministry supplies to training and education. Funding is needed for an increase in family law training and any appropriate action. All right, let's go, let's proceed to item five A is approval of bill report payments from C S C D Community Corrections, T I P, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture V I T Interest N D A forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May, good to see you.
Thank you. Uh no changes today, recommend approval as presented.
All right, we have a motion for approval as presented by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is go to item six A, approval of change order number four of sale point deployment services from Karasov Technology Corporation, amount of forty-five thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty cents for the Text Department of Information and Resources Cooperative Contract D I R C P oh five six eight seven. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is M six B, approval of purchase of doors, frames, windows, and hardware supplies from Dallas Door and Supply Company through the Byboard Cooperative Contract seven five seven two four, an amount of seventy-seven thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion?
Quick comment.
Yes.
So uh Commissioners and Judge, this is the uh, the, the doors for our temporary courtroom, and that process is in progress right across the street, so uh looking forward to having that uh in, in short order.
Perfect, good, thank you everybody. I'd uh shout out to the, to the uh facilities department, they're doing a great job down there, the guys are over there doing a wonderful job, doing that internally, save us some money in time.
Absolutely.
All right, we have a motion as second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is six C, approval of renewal of the R F P two four two eight one one, medical laboratory services for jail and public health to lab court and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is six D, approval of the change in vehicle assignment for public health as recommended by the Vehicle Assessment Committee, the V A C, and approved by Commissioners Court for fiscal year twenty twenty four.
Moved approved.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is six E, approval of the purchase of uniforms and various supplies from G T distributor, distributors through the Byboard Cooperative Contract six nine eight two three, an amount of eighty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Moved approved.
Motion, motion for approval by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven A, report for miscellaneous equipment and software ser, services presented for recording purposes only, and there be no action. Uh let's go to seven F, approval of budgetman request two zero two five three four for the Fire Marshal's Office to transfer two million one hundred thousand dollars from Permanent Improvement Fund Unappropriated Contingency to Denton County Fire Rescue Building to purchase the Ponder Fire Station for the Denton County Fire E M S Master Plant Implementation. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, and the second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven G, approval of budgetman request two zero two five three six for the three hundred sixty-second, one hundred and fifty-eighth, two hundred and eleventh, and four hundred and sixty-seventh district courts to transfer twenty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars from various line items within the district court's budgets. Funding is needed for cases transferred amongst the district courts for mental health-related needs and any appropriate action.
Moved approved.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven H, approval of budgetman request two zero two five three seven for the sixteenth, three hundred and sixty-seventh, and four hundred and eighty-fourth district courts to transfer seventy-one thousand and fifty-three dollars from various line items within the district court's budgets. Funding is needed for cases transferred amongst the district courts for mental health needs and any appropriate action.
Moved approved.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. Um let's go to seven H, which is approval of budgetman request two zero two five three four, we, we just did that one, let's go to seven I, approval of budgetman request two zero two five four zero for the two hundred and eleventh and four hundred and forty-seventh district court to transfer fourteen thousand three hundred and two dollars from various line items within the district court's budgets. Funding is needed for cases transferred amongst the district courts for mental health-related needs, training, education, hospitality supplies, statement of fact, administrative equipment, and miscellaneous court ordered expenses.
Moved approved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven J, approval of budgetman request two zero two five four two for the four hundred and sixty-seventh and four hundred and seventy-seventh district court to transfer twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars from various line items within the district court's budgets. Funding is needed to transfer, uh for cases transferred amongst the district courts for miscellaneous court ordered expenses, substitute court reporter, and court support mediation cer, rela, service-related needs and any appropriate action.
Moved approved.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven K, approval of budgetman request two zero two five four four for the three hundred and ninety-third, four hundred and forty-third, and four hundred and sixty-second district cor, courts to transfer twenty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars from various line items within the district court's budgets. Funding is needed for, needed for cases transferred amongst the district courts for mental health-related needs and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion?
Judge, I have one thing.
Yes.
Uh Alejandro is, if you don't mind, are all these dollars that people are taking from all their line item budgets that they didn't spend, and then decided to put them into these buckets to utilize those dollars before the end of the year? Or are these absolutely necessary dollars needing to be spent? Because that's what it looks like to me, is they're taking all their dollars from everywhere they didn't spend, just like I asked not to do, and doing exactly what we asked, or not we, I suggested we not do. Is that what this is?
Um no, in this case, uh the funding is being transferred for court-related uh expenditures.
Okay.
So um it's not necessarily like equipment or supplies, but it is um related to court-related needs, so uh not, not necessarily a situation in which they're taking the excess funds
Yes, sir.
and um spending them on, on other things that aren't.
So instead of uh having to come back to us and ask for funds to come from general fund to take care of some of those items, they're taking them from other areas within their budget, and, and, and I get that they're not buying notebooks and chairs, but I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding this correctly.
Yeah, so in some of these cases, uh some of the um, some of the cases have been transferred between courts.
Yes, sir.
And so what they're doing is they're moving that funding uh along with uh, to cover those expenses for those courts that are now hearing those cases.
Okay.
Uh so that's uh what most of these uh budget amendments are covering.
Okay, thank you, Judge. Thank you for your, for your uh explanation as well.
Yeah.
All right, do we, do we have a motion and a second on seven K? We do, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven L, approval of budgetman request two zero two five four five for the four three hundred and sixty-seventh, four hundred and sixty-second, four thirty-first, and four eighty-first district courts to transfer seventy-four thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars from various line items within the district court's budgets. Funding is needed for cases transferred amongst the district courts for mental health-related needs and any appropriate action.
Moved approved.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven M, approval of budgetman request for the twenty twen, budget request twenty twenty-five through twenty forty-six for the hundred and fifty-eighth, two hundred and eleventh, four seventy-seven, and four hundred and eighty-first district courts to transfer fifty-four thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars from various line items within the district court's budgets. Funding is needed to transfer, for cases transferred amongst the district courts for mental health-related needs, court-appointed attorneys, visiting judges, court supports, court, substitute court reporter, administrative supplies, training and education, a statement of fact, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven N, approval of budgetman request two zero two five four seven for emergency management to transfer thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from maintenance management with ten thousand to training and education, three thousand to contract labor, and seven hundred and fifty dollars to hospitality supplies to cover the cost of anticipated shortages in the spending categories, as well as operational needs for the remainder of the fiscal year. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven O, approval of budgetman request two zero two five four eight for the four hundred and forty-second, three hundred and ninety-third, and four hundred and seventy-seven district courts to transfer fifty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars from various line items within the district court's budgets. Funding is needed for cases transferred amongst the district courts for mental health-related needs, training and education, statement of fact, visiting judges, substitute court reporter, administrative supplies, dues and subscriptions, and miscellaneous court ordered expenses.
Moved approved.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is M seven P, approval of budgetman request two zero two five four nine for the law enforcement facility to transfer thirty-four thousands from maintenance management to landscaping expense to cover shortage in the, in the spending category and landscaping expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Moved approved.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven Q, approval of budgetman request two zero two five 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 for the sheriff's office to transfer thirty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars from salary assistance to overtime cash option within various sheriff's office budgets, fifty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars from training and education to inmate transportation expenses for a total transfer of ninety-two thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars to cover the shortages in the spending categories. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Go ahead. Yes, I, I totally agree. I totally agree. Hopefully, we're, we're gonna be out of that business shortly. All right, we have a motion as second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven R, approval of budgetman request two zero two five five nine for information technology transfer, seven thousand from application development support, contract labor, to training and education to cover additional funding for workday training needs. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven S, approval of budgetman request two zero two five six one for the county jail to transfer a total of nine hundred and eighty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars from non-departmental unappropriate contingency, with five thousand six hundred and ten to out-of-county prisoner expense, and nine hundred and nine, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars to overtime cash option outside the budget amendment for human resources policies as recommended by the Budget Office. Funds are needed to cover overtime pay for July and August to cover the cost of inmates housed at the Cook County Jail. Perfect, thank you. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I thought that, so obviously, we're seeing this two months later. Um that's an exorbitant amount.
That's a million dollars.
It's a million dollars in two months. I'm a little confused on the overtime being so high for, I understand July was, we were, he, you know, we were still trying to work ourselves to a par level, if you will, but um that's more than it was months prior. So could, do you have any insight on that, or?
Um I think uh, I, so I think the current expenses that you're seeing here for overtime, that, they haven't gone down, uh but they haven't gone up either, so it's still approximately the same, and it is covering multiple pay periods, because there wasn't uh any court um for a couple of, I think, weeks in, in um, in July and August, and so it's not covering just the usual uh two pay periods. I believe it's either maybe three and a half pay periods.
Yeah.
But the expenses per pay period have remained the same. It's just that there's more, more pay periods within uh this budget amendments that there, than there typically is.
Yeah. So they haven't gone down, then?
They haven't gone down, no. Expenses have remained.
With all the new employees.
Yeah, they should be going down.
Yeah, they should be going down.
I mean, and again, I understand some have to go through the training process, but we've been discussing that for six months.
But, no.
Okay.
They've been training for a long time.
They got onboard them.
Yeah.
They got onboard, we got five or six new DOs today, so.
I appreciate it. Thanks for that explanation.
Everyone helps.
Sorry, Judge.
No, no, good. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we'll go to seven T later. Let's go to eight A, which is a report from Human Resources regarding hiring and actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Gustavo.
Judge Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hire in the county clerk, one promotion in the county judge's office, one new hire in UNA probation, four new hires in the sheriff's office, all of them are detention officer ones, one promotion in the sheriff's office, one rehire in the tax office, and one new hire in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Perfect, good. Thank you, Gustavo. Again, that is presented for recording purposes only. Next is item eight B. Approval of the extension of the temporary program manager for County Criminal Court Number Three, the Veterans Court. The Chair moved for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve A approval in local cooperation agreement for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six between Denton County, Texas and Wise County, Texas for the emergency housing and care of inmates.
Moved up.
Motion by Commissioner Williams.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll come back to thirteen A and B after executive session. Let's go to item thirteen C. Approval of proposed twenty twenty-six sheriff and constable's fee schedule as recommended by Constable Michael Truitt and approved by the Sheriff and Constable Fee Committee. And we do have a proposed fee schedule, and we have an amendment to that. And I believe Commissioner Williams is gonna read that to the record.
Yes, we have an amendment that needs to be made. Immediate possession fees, which takes care of squatters, a hundred and fifty plus fifty per hour per deputy after the first hour.
Perfect. So, so we have the fee schedule, which was presented in the backup, and then we have this amendment to it. So we have a motion by Commissioner Williams. The Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I want to thank the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly, for your assistance with that. Next, let's go to
Thanks to Constable.
Item thirteen D approval of request to grant a, to submit a grant application for the, to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Didn't benefit Lee Grant. In amount of nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. The Chair moved for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen A approval of the conveyance of a public art easement by Denton County, Texas as grantor to the city of Lewisville, Texas as, as grantee over, under, through, across, and along the subject property located on the west side of State Highway one twenty-one, business north of Mill Street intersection described as Decad Parcel three zero five three six three and being zero point two zero eight eight acres out of the J W King Survey abstract six nine five tri five fifty-eight A, city of Lewisville, Texas. And any appropriate action? Were we having a presentation on this or not? We will hold this. We can hold this for a future meeting.
There's a hand.
Sorry, Judge.
Okay, wait. What's that? Okay, perfect.
Come on, please.
Let's change this, yeah. No, I'm not.
That's the one you're looking for?
Well.
If you just want to use the hair root.
Good morning. Please say hi and introduce yourself.
Um, hello Commissioners. My name is Denise Helbing, and I'm with the city of Lewisville in the Arts Department.
Great.
Thank you. We are requesting an easement for access to some land owned by Denton County for the installation of a work of art called Endless Tread that we will be partnering with the University of North Texas, their art department, to have a student artist create this work of art. Endless Tread, let me get to the, there's a lot of background here. Endless Tread is a Mobius infinity-type shape, will be made out of recycled tires. And this will be the fourth such partnership that the city will be doing with University of North Texas. We've had a very fruitful relationship with them. And we believe that this location here along Business one twenty-one at Mill Street would be a really wonderful place for this work of art to both connect with the historic auto industry-type businesses along Business one twenty-one and would be the catalyst art project for the one twenty-one beautification projects that the city is working on.
I think that's great.
That's pretty neat.
I drive that every day, so I'm looking forward to that.
Great. Any other?
Old tires.
We'll go back and take a look at it.
These tires, yes.
Yeah.
I'd like to take, I'd like to take a look at it.
Okay.
Can you go back to it again?
Oh, the work?
Yes.
Yes, sir. This work was originally proposed to go along Valley Ridge Boulevard near the Fleet and Facilities Building for the city of Lewisville. And a different work of art, won by a hare, and that has been installed. It's called Lewis the Lizard, and it is a two-headed lizard who is a mechanic himself, like the fleet workers. But this, this work came in in a very close second, and so we have been brainstorming ideas of where we could bring this work of art also to Lewisville and Denton County. So, and it will hopefully eventually include benches to be around it. But at this time, the work would just be itself, and the pad created for it would be able to accommodate benches at a later time.
Great. I'll keep my comments to this myself. So. Commissioner Mitchell moves approval. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep. Next is fourteen B approval of the third renewal of the VR Voter Focus System License and Maintenance Agreement between Denton County, Texas and VR Systems Incorporated, VR Systems, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars with funding in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars to come from order line item number one zero zero one CC one zero seven zero zero five four zero 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 SC five four zero six one, and with funding in the amount of thirteen thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars to come from order line item number two zero four six CC one zero seven zero zero five four zero 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 SC five four zero six one. And any appropriate action?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen C approval of confidential data release agreement between Denton, between the Public Employee Benefit Cooperative member Denton County, Texas as a member of the Public Employee Benefits Cooperative Marathon Health LLC and Blue Claws and Busch Hill of Texas, a division of Blue, a division of Healthcare Services Corporation, a mutual legal reserve company, claim administrator, business associate, as recommended by the Denton County Human Resource Department at the recommendation of the P E B C. And any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen D approval of the third renewal addendum to the Health Services Agreement between Denton County, Texas and Marathon Health LLC for Denton County Employee Wellness Clinic, R I P two zero two five nine three, in the amount not to exceed six eight three four four nine with funding to come from the Denton County Benefit Plan as recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director. Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen E approval of purchase of drainage easement by Denton County, Texas for, from William C. Level and Mark W. Level in the amount of one hundred and thirty dollars plus closing costs for the acquisition of the zero point one zero four acre, six hundred, six hundred and eight square feet tract of land situated in the George Hallmark Survey, abstract number five one six, Denton County, Texas for the Jackson Road Improvement Project, which serves a public purpose with funding to come from Fund eight zero eight nine Costner CC nine zero two zero zero, spend category SC nine zero 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 four program PR nine zero six four and project PRJ CV one zero six four formerly Jackson Road Precinct Four, Order Line item eight nine seven four two one nine zero five zero. Any appropriate action?
The Senator.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Falconer. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen F approval of purchase of drainage easement and utility easement by Denton County, Texas from Bruman Con in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars plus closing costs for the acquisition of a zero point zero zero eight acre, this is three hundred and thirty-seven square feet tract of land situated in the George Hallmark Survey, abstract number five one six, Denton County, Texas, and said tract being part of the Lot One, Block One, South Branch addition to addition, in addition to Denton County, Texas, according to the plat there of recorded in Cabinets G, page sixty-two, of the plat records of Denton County, Texas, with the easements being acquired for the Jackson Road Improvement Project, which serves a public purpose with funding to come from Fund eight zero eight nine Costner CC nine zero two zero zero, spend category SC nine zero zero four program PR nine zero six four and project PRJ CV one zero six four formerly Jackson Road Project Four, Order Line item eight nine seven four two one nine zero five zero. Any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen G approval of medical examiner's district agreement between Tarrant County, Texas and Denton County, Texas for the, for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year in the amount of one million nine hundred thousand and twenty-nine dollars of funding to come from the Order Line item zero one six eight six five two zero eight zero. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this one.
It's the world's longest agenda placement.
You wanna, yeah, take a sip of coffee.
All right, here we go. One approval of the purchase and sale contract between Ponder Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated as seller in Denton County, Texas as purchaser for the purchase of all real property and improvements located at one zero two East Bailey Street, Ponder, Texas, seven six two five nine, and further described as lots five through eleven, block ten, original town of Ponder, in addition, an addition of the city of Ponder, Denton County, Texas, as recorded in volume seventy-five, page eighty-one, plat records of Denton County, Texas. The property for the purchase price of two million one hundred thousand dollars plus all applicable closing costs, including title, insurance, and boundary survey, and two, approval of the property lease agreement between Denton County, Texas as less or, and Ponder Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated as less E, whereby Ponder Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated will lease the real property improvements located at one zero two East Bailey Street, Ponder, Texas, seven six two five nine, for a term of thirty-six months with an option to extend the lease for an additional term of thirty-six months for, at an annual rent amount of one dollars commencing on the closing date when Denton County, Texas acquires a property in three, approval of the bill of sale of, for personal property between the Ponder Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated as seller and Denton County, Texas as buyer for the purchase of all personal property, furniture, fixtures, and equipment located at one zero two East Bailey Street, Ponder, Texas, seven six two five nine. The personal property in amount of one dollar, whereby Denton County, Texas will take possession of the personal property described in the bill of sale on October the first, twenty twenty-eight, with an option to accelerate or extend the effective date of the purchase and four, grant authorization for the Denton County Auditor and Denton County Treasurer as applicable to pay earnest money in amount of twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars to title resources care of Kim Garret, escrow officer, within thirty days of the effective date of the purchase of the sales contract for the property and grant authorization for the Denton County Auditor and Denton County Treasurer to pay the entire purchase price of two million one hundred thousand dollars less earnest money deposit plus all applicable closing costs, including title, insurance, and boundary survey, and the closing date to title resources care of Kim Garret, escrow officer, and five grand authorization for the Denton County Church to sign all, all documents related, required for the closing of the purchased property, requiring the property lease agreement and the bill of sale for personal property with funding to come from ten eighty permanent improvement funds Order Line item BI zero zero two three five Ponder Fire Department, or with funding to come from any other lawful source as authorized, determined, and approved by the Denton County Auditor, and any appropriate action.
Judge, I would love to move approval of this. It's the first big step in our execution of our county fire prevention and the whole thing that we're trying to do.
Our whole system.
Fire prevention plan.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion?
Yes, Judge, real quick, I just want to thank everybody that was involved. This was, there was a lot of work that went on behind the scenes, just like most of the things that go on here that people don't realize. It's, once it gets up here, it's like it's ready to go.
It looks very simple.
Yeah, it looks simple.
Except reading this page.
Except the reading that you just did.
The whole page.
But I do want to thank everybody that was involved. There was, there was a lot of time and effort and energy, and I think the city for, for becoming a partner in this, that's what it takes as well, so. And obviously, Commissioner Edmondson was involved in this. It is in her precinct, and I'm excited to see how this relationship flourishes, and it is our, our first fire department in the history of Denton County.
Yep. That's great.
And also, Commissioner, thank you for that shout-out. We have the fire chief from Ponder here with us today.
Oh, excellent.
So Chief Reckback would stand up. We thank you for coming into our plan. We're delighted to have you.
Yes, no, absolutely.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. Thank you for having me. Hadn't planned on speaking this morning, but just
We're glad to have you.
Yeah.
Just to reiterate what Commissioner Williams has said here, it's the, the first step of a grander plan for the greater good of Denton County.
Yes, sir.
Ponder Volunteer Fire Department is honored to be part of what we're, what we're trying to become in the future, so.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate it. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you for being here, and, you know, this is a fundamental shift in service delivery here at the county through changes, through legislative changes in the way that Denton County is gonna grow and develop, and who's gonna be providing those services. And so this is just a timely, efficient, effective, and innovative way which Denton County has responded to this new paradigm and new environment which we're operating in. So I want to, I want to thank the Ponder Fire Department for all that you've done to revoke.
That's great.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen I approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven agreement for fire protection, ambulance service between Denton County, Texas and Ponder Volunteer Fire Department.
Again, I'll happily second.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen J approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven agreement for fire protection and ambulance service between Denton County, Texas and Denton County E S D Number One, City of Highland Village Fire Department, City of Justin, Pilot Point Fire Department, Town of Prosper Fire Department, and the Town of Trophy Club Fire Department. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen L approval of interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas, and Town of Flowermount, Texas for the purchase, for the purpose of engineering, utility locations, inspections, and construction. The first road is a new two-lane roadway with two roundabouts between US three seventy-seven and FM eleven seventy-one bypass road. The traffic signals at the Canyon Falls, US three seventy-seven and FM eleven seventy-one intersections located in the Town of Flowermount and Denton County Commission Precinct Four with the county agreeing to contribute twelve million dollars for its satisfaction and completion of the project with funding in amount of six hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars to come from Judge Discretionary Trip twenty-two Order Line item eight nine seven four three seven nine zero six zero and be transferred to First Road Precinct Four, Auditor Line item eight nine seven six eight seven nine zero five zero with funding in amount of four million seven thousand and fifteen dollars to come from Judge Discretionary Trip twenty-two Order Line item nine three seven four three seven nine zero six zero and to be transferred to First Road Precinct Four Order Line item nine three seven six eight seven nine zero five zero and funding in the amount of seven million three hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars to come from Judge Discretionary Trip twenty-two Order Line item nine four seven four three seven nine zero six zero and be transferred to First Road Precinct Four Order Line item nine four six seven six eight seven nine zero five zero. Any appropriate action? The Chair moved for approval.
And I'll happily second.
Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It's gonna be a big, huge master plan development in the county. One of the
Judge, thank you for your
Absolutely. It's gonna be a great, great project for the park system and everything all around the whole, all the surrounding cities as well. Fourteen M is approval of request for final payment, interlocal agreement between funds by Denton County, Texas to the Texas Department of Transportation, Texas, in the amount of nine hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the Outer Loop Project from I thirty-five to Dallas North Owee, C J S zero nine one eight four six three four one, with funding to come from the Outer Loop Judge Trip twenty-two Order Line item nine four seven three six one nine zero six zero. And any appropriate action?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion?
Judge, one thing, real quick. I just want to show that this is a perfect example of what I would like the citizens to understand the county does, and we have a, we are very good about funding ahead of time to try to get these projects up and off the ground and going, and then the state comes in and picks up when it finally hits their time, and the monies start flowing from the state. This is happening in multiple state highways that are in Precinct One, and I'm sure Precinct Four as well. And it's imperative that the citizens know that the county does everything they can to get these projects not only off the ground, but moving as quickly as possible. And I really appreciate the partnership that we have with Tech dot, even though they are quite a bit slower getting to our projects as we would like, but they have a whole state to deal with. But the local folks here really do communicate well with us and try to do the best job they can. So I just think it's imperative that the citizens realize how great a job the county does in trying to get these things up off the ground and moving faster with our funds that we're utilizing from the citizens. Thank you, Judge.
Perfect, good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I totally agree. Next is fourteen N approval of master agreement for professional geotechnical engineering and material testing services, R F S Q two five two eight five six, between Denton County, Texas, the County and Alliance Geotechnical Group LLC consultant, as recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director. Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen O approval agreement between Denton County and engineer, for engineering services, that's the top of there, for electrical and generator upgrades, R F S Q two five two eight six six, between Denton County, Texas, and Leaf Engineers in the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred dollars with reimbursement expenses not to exceed two thousand five hundred dollars with funding to come from the budget line item CC nine zero one zero zero, Fund one zero eight zero, SC nine zero 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 three, PR nine zero one zero, PRJ CV one one nine eight, as recommended by Denton County Purchasing Director.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go to seventeen, which is community updates. Let's start with Commissioner Precinct One, and we'll come back into executive session.
All right, Judge, thank you. I've got two things here. Not that they're the most brightest of the two items today, but they are important to, to say. Sympathy for the Denton High School seniors, family, and the school, and anybody that knew knew this young man. Would like to expend, send our sympathy to the family and friends of Denton Bronco cornerback senior, Troy Mario Allen Junior, who passed away recently. That's such a sad situation, anytime a young individual is, leaves this, this earth before they should, in, in our opinion, of course, he went to do better things for God, but nevertheless. And then Coach G A Moore Junior recently passed away at the age of eighty-six. When he retired, he was the coach with the most wins in Texas football history, which was four hundred and twenty-nine wins, ninety-seven losses, and nine ties, and currently sits in second place on that list. He began coaching in nineteen sixty-three in Pil- I wasn't even alive yet, Pilot Point. He coached in Salina and retired from Aubrey in two thousand eleven. He was inducted to the Texas Sports Hall of Fame in two thousand twelve. Now, that's a huge accomplishment in the state of Texas, is, you know, of course, because football is such a huge issue, I mean, huge issue, it can be that too, but it's such a huge, huge thing for, for, for Texas, you know, football, Friday nights, and, and that, that's, that's an unbelievable accomplishment, so hats off to that, to that gentleman and his family, but again, another unfortunate thing, because it's a passing of someone, but nevertheless, I thought it was imperative and important to, to, to mention those two individuals. Also, real quick, Judge, excellent job today. This is a long, a long, a lot of reading. Thank you for not leaving this to any of our hands, and you made sure you were here.
I want to thank my first grade teacher, Judy Crawford, at Central Elementary, for teaching me how to read.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Her husband's, her husband's picture is right over there on the wall.
Really? Well, mine didn't do as good a job.
Former Judge Crawford.
But, but nevertheless.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was a long, long, long day so far.
And we're not done yet.
No, I know.
We still have more reading.
I was about to say, we're doing executive session. That's the longest executive session we've had too, so, anyway, thank you, Judge.
That's a big one, yeah, good, 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 good comments. Mr. Coach Moore was here not too long ago, about a year, year and a half ago. He was here for, if y'all recall, he was here, we had an agenda item, and good, good to see him and his family, and I want to thank his service for, to the residents, and those young boys that he coached all those many years and decades here in Denton County, and they were left better because they had Coach Moore in their lives, so condolences to the family. Go ahead, Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you, Judge. Reminder that, as we've said, that we have nine eleven on Thursday, and remembering that day in our history, and we have a few items going on, or a few things going on in Precinct Two in Little Elm. We have Autumn Fest that runs from the September eleventh through the thirteenth, at five o'clock, and that's a weekend carnival. That's at seven oh one West Eldorado, and then in Frisco, we have a nine eleven remembrance ceremony on Thursday, seven thirty in the morning to nine. That's at seventy-five ninety-nine Eldorado Parkway, at the Freedom Meadow, at the Warren Sports Con- Complex, and then they have movie night in the district, and that's at the P G A, and that's on the twelfth, seven P M, and Cycle the City at Frisco Commons Park on the thirteenth at eight A M. Crossroads has their fall market on the thirteenth at nine A M at F M four twenty-four in Fish Trap, and then Carrollton has Succulents One Oh One. I guess you get to learn about cacti and such. That'll be at the Josie Ranch Library on the thirteenth at ten thirty A M. That's all I have.
Perfect, good, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell.
Flower Mountain, we have the Flower Mountain Fire and Police nine eleven ceremony on September eleventh at Neil Wilson Stadium in Flower Mountain, and then we have movies in the park on September the twelfth, seven P M to nine thirty P M. In Lake Cities, we have a bicycle rally at the Agora, cycling at all levels. I don't think I'll attend that one. In Louisville, we have a neighborhood grant workshop, September the ninth, six thirty to seven thirty P M, which is today, at the Jean Carey Animal Shelter and Adoption Center on September the eleventh. In Louisville, we have a remem- remembrance ceremony at the Tittle McFadden Public Safety Center. If you haven't seen that, go by and see it. It's a wonderful location, wonderful building. We also have River Care Cleanup on September thirteenth at Layla in Louisville, and I want to congratulate our Louisville I S D teacher, Timothy Fales, who is a finalist for the twenty twenty-six teachers, Texas Teacher of the Year by the Texas Association of School Administr- Administrators, and he currently teaches geography at Flower Mountain Ninth Grade Campus. That's all I have, Judge.
Good, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Edmondson.
Commissioner Falconer, I don't think I can top the succly, succulent things. I'm not sure I can even say it, but in South Lake, we're going to have Gardening One Oh One, Thriving in the Texas Heat, Beginning Workshop on the Basics of Starting a Home Garden, and that's the sixteenth, from one to two P M at their Training Center. We've all got kinds of farmers markets still going on, Justin, Crumb, Cleanup Event in New Fairview, and then we will have a special Patriot Day Ceremony in Trophy Club on September eleventh at eleven forty-five A M at their fire station. This is a community gathering to honor the memory of this day, and it's open to the community. Thank you, Judge.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I got a couple things. Shout out to Officer Rachel Roberts from the Louisville Police Department for being named the winner of Best of Denton County twenty twenty-five as the best police officer, so congratulations, Rachel. And in Flower Mountain, our Flower Mountain Senior Center is having a community health fair Friday, September the twelfth, from nine to noon there on Windsor Drive, right there behind Madea, and they're going to do free health checks, and hearing, and skin exams, and flu shots, and lots of good things happening at the Flower Mountain Senior Centers this Friday. There's always good things happening there. And then I do want to mention that we're having our, the Summit Club, also in Flower Mountain, will be hosting the Eighth Annual Honoring Our Heroes Blood Drive on Saturday, September the thirteenth, from eight to four, at the Cross Timbers Y M C A, right there at twenty twenty-one Cross Timbers Road, so be sure to, to do that. This blood driver is their, this blood drive is in honor of former Navy SEAL Dan Licado, who was in a catastrophic car accident a few years ago that took his legs and required ninety-four units of blood to save his life, so he survived and is a great guy, and we continue this blood drive in his great honor. So come out Friday and enjoy that, I mean, Saturday, for the blood drive at the Y M C A. Let's go to executive session. We have fifteen A, Texas Governor Code five five one zero seven two, Deliberation Regarding Real Property, Close Meeting to Liberate the Purchase, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property. If deliberation in opening meeting would have a detrimental effect on position of governmental body negotiates with a third person. Fifteen B, Texas Governor Code five five one zero seven four five A, Personal Matters Affecting the County Advisory Body, Close Meeting to Liberate the Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, Reassignment Duties, Discrimination or Dismissal of a Member of a Advisory Body to with the City of Louisville, Texas, Increment Reinvestment Zone, Ters, Two Board, and any appropriate action. Fifteen C is Texas Governor Code five five one zero seven four five A one, Personnel Matters Affecting the County Advisory Body, Close Meeting to Liberate the Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, Reassignment Duties, Discrimination or Dismissal of a Member of a Advisory Body to with the City of Louisville, Texas, Increment Reinvestment Zone, Ters, Four Board, and any appropriate action. Item fifteen D, Texas Governor Code five five one zero eight seven, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Close Meeting to Liberate the Offer of a Financial or Other Incentive to a Business Prospect Regarding Commercial or Financial Information that the Government of the Body has received from a Business Prospect that the Governmental Body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of a Governmental Body located in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct Four, and with which the Governmental Body is conducting economic development negotiations, and any appropriate action. Item fifteen E, Texas Governor Code five five one zero seven one one A, Consultation with Attorney, in a Close Meeting when the Governmental Body seeks the Advice of its Attorney about pending litigation in Cause Number Four Two Five C V Zero Zero Two Three Seven, St. Alder Rollins versus City of Plano et al., which is currently pending in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas, and any appropriate action. I do have amended posting here, which is for fifteen F, Texas Governor Code five five one zero seven one one A, Consultation with Attorney, in a Close Meeting when the Governmental Body seeks the Advice of its Attorney about pending litigation in Cause Number Four Two Four C V Zero Zero Eight Seven One A L M, St. Peterson versus Murphy et al., which is currently pending in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas et al.
Judge, I apologize, it's four twenty-four dash C V dash zero zero seven eight one dash A L M. I probably typed it wrong.
Okay, so we will, but go ahead and restate it for the record. I, I did what y'all sent me, but it may be an error.
Fifteen F was cause number four twenty-four dash C V dash zero zero seven eight one dash A L M.
Okay. All right, perfect. All right, thank you. Next is fifteen G, Texas Governor Code five five one zero seven one one A, Consultation with Attorney, in a Close Meeting when the Governmental Body seeks the Advice with its Attorney about pending litigation in Cause Number Two Two One Zero Six Nine One Four Eight One, St. Joraleen versus Denton County, which is currently pending in the four hundred eighty-first Judicial District Court, Denton County, Texas. Fifteen H, Texas Governor Code five five one zero seven one one A, Consultation with Attorney, in a Close Meeting when the Governmental Body seeks the Advice of its Attorney about pending litigation in Cause Number Four Two Four C V Five Nine Nine, St. Tanya Victoria versus Denton County at Texas et al., currently pending in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas Sherman Division. Fifteen I, Texas Governor Code five five one zero seven one one A, Consultation with Attorney, in a Close Meeting when the Governmental Body seeks the Advice of its Attorney about pending litigation in Cause Number Four Two Four C V Zero Zero Six Two Seven, St. Lynette Sylvie versus Denton County, Texas, et al., currently pending in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas Sherman Division, and any appropriate action. Fifteen J, Texas Governor Code five five one zero seven one one A, Consultation with Attorney, in a Close Meeting when the Governmental Body seeks the Advice of its Attorney about pending litigation in case number one nine two three six four nine, St. Purdue Pharma L P et al., which is currently pending in the United States Bankruptcy Court in the south, in the Southern District of New York, and any appropriate action. All right, it is eleven thirty-nine, and we are going to go to executive session, and I do not anticipate us reconvening till one thirty, one thirty, so that gives all the staff abundance of time to go make lunch plans accordingly, so I do not anticipate us coming